Call this meeting back to order after short recess. We're up to agenda item number 21. Vote to confirm the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Evelyn Rivera as the municipal hearing officer for a one-year term, effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. State ethics and good standing.
So moved.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, this is recommended unanimously through the subcommittee. This is a standard reappointment. Has to be done every year according to state law.
Very good. Any discussion? Counsel Lozlo.
After some discussion with Counsel Adams, I will be supporting this appointment.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one. Item number 22. Vote to ratify the agreement with Mark Karen, employee of Capital Associates, Inc., as the only proposer to fill a one-year contracted position as redevelopment authority executive director, contention on background check and ethics training, and allow the town manager to sign any related documents.
Second.
Very good, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That came to my plan development subcommittee, four to zero in favor of recommendation to the town council. I do know Mr. Karen personally and how professionally is we've worked hand-in-hand on a couple of things in the past, but I also know that Ms. Dean and the town manager have worked extensively in favor of getting an executive director in that position for some time that which we approved through ARPA funds. I believe it was for $80,000, but I highly recommend this individual to fill this director's spot. And I'll pass it on to Ms. Dean if she's got a lot more than I've got to say.
I'd like to share that in the past week, if I may. Thank you. In the past week, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from throughout the community on Mr. Karen. Not only does he have extensive public service, but he qualified for the job based on his real estate endeavors with Capital Associates. He was involved with some transactions in Lawrence, Mass., Baltimore, Maryland, and then very locally here in East Brookfield, he's helping with some dealings. We got positive feedback from planning board members. Anybody who has been involved in the town for over 15, 20 years seems to be responding well. It sounds like it's sort of the perfect fit for his personality, his skill set, et cetera. It feels like it was tailor-fit to him. So I think it's a welcome opportunity. We're trying to set him up for as much success as possible in the downtown. We've already got the ball rolling. He was gracious enough to start working last week and came along on Wednesday for some site visits to some local buildings and then attended some key meetings at the chamber with Mass. Growth Capital Corporation, Mass. Development, and M O B D. So we've got the, I feel like we've got the momentum and he's just going to be off on smooth sailing. And I'll step away in case you wanted to hear from Mr. Karen himself.
Counselor Adams? Counselor Adams?
Counsel Adams.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can barely hear. Must be the fan, I'm telling you. I can barely hear anybody saying anything up there. So apologize. We, as a town council, voted in favor on March 28th for this position, and Ms. Dean had corrected me as I asked her some other questions about the position. This is specific to the core of our town where the redevelopment authority has its requirements set in stone, and I just wanted to add a few more thoughts to that. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lozlo.
Dean says if you're around 15 years, you'd know who this gentleman is. I don't, I never made it a habit of voting for this gentleman in the past, but I want you, I want you, but I want you to know he's a good friend of mine. We've had some discussions in the past about government, politics, economic development. Mark has come a long way, a knowledgeable guy. I will be supporting his appointment tonight because he is definitely qualified for this position. Thank you, Ms. Jim.
Very good. Counsel Adal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not only qualify for that position, and I think he's hard too for the town of Southbridge. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, you know, I know Mr. Karen too. We all know Mr. Karen. Former town councilor, former state rep. I think you were the original beautify Southbridge guy. I did look at your resume online. You work for, you're a senior advisor of government relations at Capital Associates. So I would say you're definitely qualified. I would like to hear from Mr. Karen though, because to see exactly what his proposal is for this position. What are you bringing to the table? Are you, are you bringing Capital Associates with you to the table? That would really be a plus for the town. What are your ideas, your plans? I'll line something like that, but absolutely I will support this. Thank you.
Very good. Please.
Mr. Chairman, through you, thank you. My relationship with Capital Associates is one of great support. There's, there's a lot of intricate pieces that go into building and re-energizing a downtown core. It doesn't just stay at the downtown. Some of it is how do you enrich the soil, the social soil, so that things and economic and business can actually flourish in your downtown? Otherwise, we may be here just saying, hey, celebrating ribbon cuttings for businesses that just see the fertile opportunities that are in downtown. We need to figure out what it is that can enrich our social soil so that that happens. I'm engaged, I'm energized, I'm humbled and actually honored by the support that has been voiced, thank you, prior to coming up. But the, there is, there is a reach that I have through my association with Capital Associates that lends me some other experiences. For instance, today, a good friend of mine just got appointed to the city manager's job up in Lowell. We have many mutual friends and we have many mutual efforts in front of us. We're able to kind of collaborate in those measures kind of freely and speak freely. The engagement in East Brookfield is one, as it was part of my district, and that little community is, you know, starting to energize itself too. I do get a sense of feeling, it's more than a sense of feeling, but I think I'm pretty accurate in recognizing that we are really on the doorstep of Renaissance here with the, with the energy and the direction and the wisdom that is in this administration, but that is brought because of the diligence and the wisdom that this body, this board, has brought in order to bring those people on. There is, I was thinking today, maybe what I would say, not prepared for Counsel Lozlo's glowing endorsement. I thought I was going to have to defend myself a little more rigidly, rigorously, but I get a feeling, I just, there's an analogy, it's a sports analogy, in last night's game, notwithstanding, I kind of feel like the Al Horford of the Celtics, you know, you're there, they thought you were expendable, you kind of left, they ask you back, the team and the structure and the chemistry has changed just a little bit, and now's the right time to put that pie together to reach great success. I think we're here. It's, it's refreshing to go through as I'm trying to catch up on where this administration is, where you are on some of these projects, and see that some of the efforts of days gone by, my days gone by, are still alive. The, I guess the good news is they're not dead. I guess if we have any criticism, it would be they're not done, but that is, I take it as my charge to make sure that that happens. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Jovan.
Yeah, through you, I'd like to welcome Mark to this position. I know I had an opportunity, I believe about a year ago, oh, maybe a little bit longer than that, when we were in the search for a new town manager about conversation about direction of the town and vision for the town and how that all works in, and certainly Mark had a lot of good, good comments to reflect on about where are we as a community, where do we want to go and as a team, how we're going to get there. So I'm glad that he was persistent to be able to bring to the table this new position and through the efforts of, of our administration, the opportunity to bring him aboard because he does, even though he's a Tantascua graduate.
I didn't hold it against him.
And there's nothing wrong with that, but what I mean is, I mean, Counsel Lozlo and I bleed Southbridge red, white Southbridge boys through and through, but, and just, Mark's heart is really with the town of Southbridge and want to see us succeed. And we are at the doorstep of what he says, this Renaissance in a community, and Mark and I have had a lot of conversations about, okay, we are coming through town, and I say this a lot of meetings about what we're seeing in development of Southbridge, but it's also the vision of master planning and all that and how that works. So, so I'm excited to see where this will, will take the community on this one-year journey and perhaps longer to really bring a vital business district downtown in that core, because we do have a lot to offer. So I thank you for putting your name forward, and all I would ask is that, to make it official, one of the councils support that this be a roll call vote.
Anyone else? Very good.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes, yes.
Counsel Jovan.
Yes.
Counsel Lozlo.
Yep.
Counsel Marketti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steve.
Eight oh, motion passes.
Again, thank you. I'm humbled and honored. Thank you.
Welcome home.
Item number 23. Vote to ratify the agreement with Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Mastott, for shared streets funding in the amount of $49,544 to purchase snow removal equipment on pedestrian ways and allow the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved.
Take it.
Counselor Adams.
Think, Mr. Chair, is four zero in favor of, send it up to town council for, we recommend it for approval. This is, if you recall, this grant, I believe there's two items for this grant. One was paint, well, higher level paint for our main street areas, and then the snow removal process, the Mast D O T denied the, turned down the one with the paint, but did approve this, this snow removal equipment for our sidewalks, which obviously we all know is sorely needed during the wintertime.
Ms. Dean.
Yes, I have some unfortunate news. Speaking with Matt this evening, the quote that we got is old enough that when I asked them to please the second we were awarded, verify that this is still good. If it is not, we're going to need to go out for bids for the equipment. The bid, the quote came back just about $50,200. So at this point, we're going to have to go out to the state, there is a state bid list, which makes it easy to go out for these, but unfortunately, that means we're just going to be slightly shy on the, on the grant, and so I'll have to come back to the town council for additional funds. What I would propose at that time is likely there are just a few thousand dollars left in the Central Street parking lot funds from the parking lot work from fiscal year 17, fiscal year 18 C D B G grants. This might be a great way to close out those funds and use them to be able to make up the difference. So at a future date, I'll be coming to town council for that. Otherwise, it's very good news.
Very good. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I take it that this is the, there is a skid steer loader on the capital budget, and I take it that this is the funding for that skid steer, correct?
Yes.
So then I would presume that that would be taken off the capital list after tonight?
I would consult with Ms. Harnoy, but we can come back and let you know officially. I'll make a note.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel Adams.
So we need, do we need to amend this or postpone this till, once we get the quotes Because right now, it's based on a quote of $49,000, just under $50,000. If it's going to be a little bit more, we need to know the exact amount.
Ms. Dean.
If I may, through you, there won't be any adjustment to the amount of the award that we'll be receiving from Mastott at this point.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
So this motion is relevant, and then what we would do is come back with the amended amount and the additional funding source.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Okay. Anyone else? Counsel Steve.
Yeah, just a quick question. So this won't have a problem with actually getting the grant, will it? The fact that it went out?
No, we've been awarded, if we end up having to pay additional for the equipment, that's, it's just on us, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, Counsel Jovan.
Again, I'd just like to publicly thank Ms. Dean for this grant. Again, we talked about capital and through the good work of the capital department. These are grants that we're getting, and I do understand the town, fire chief, I think, sent us an email earlier today that we rewarded the grant for their urban grant for the ambulance that just came in as well.
USDA rural facilities.
Right.
Excuse me, emergency healthcare grant.
Right. So again, lots of money that being brought in by this department that is affecting our ability to reduce any impact on the tax base, so just thank you very much for that.
Just doing my job.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 24. Vote to approve applying for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities' park grant program to acquire 76 Central Street and construct a pocket park to be reimbursed up to $175,000 or 70% consistent with the urban renewal plan and allow the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved.
Counselor Adams.
Think, Mr. Chair, again, four zero in favor of sending it to the town council, highly recommended. Just want to make note on this, this Parkland, our Parkland grant, or the park grant itself, $175,000 from the state, $75,000 would come from miscellaneous, I believe it's miscellaneous account that we have on, on the, from C D B G money? Yeah, C D B G miscellaneous income account. So it'll be, it'll be covered as far as paying for the whole thing. Thank you.
Counsel Marketti.
So on this one, we're applying for the park grant, $175,000, up to 70% of the needed funds, and $75,000, up to 70%, so it could be less than that, and $75,000 of C D B G money, for a total of $250,000 for 76 Central Street Pocket Park, which is about .06 acres of land. And first of all, I think this is sort of putting the cart before the horse. This is for the rail trail. We don't know if we're getting the rail trail money yet. We don't know if it'll be funded or built. So it seems to me that it would be better to use the rail trail money on this, if awarded, and use this grant on improving our other parks. I think I've said in the past, we have a lot of parks in town which are needing of improvements, and I feel there should be some equitable funding among all the parks in town. A few parks get all the funding, some neighborhood parks barely get anything. As an example, Morris Street needs a lot of work on the field, grass is overgrowing on the diamonds, there's water drainage issues, the playground needs work, the basketball courts are cracking. I've been advocating for those improvements since I got on the council. A walking path would we go down there for the senior center? I've talked about Morris Street in the past. Last year, I thought we discussed at P and D that we were going to provide some equitable funding for other parks. And each year, the council seemed to agree with me, but yet it doesn't happen. So I think $250,000 would go a long way towards fixing some of the problems at Morris Street Park. There was also a market appraisal and a yellow book appraisal. I haven't seen those appraisals on this property. I haven't seen them yet. And I haven't, I don't see a completed application form on this document either, whereas the shared streets had a complete, very detailed application form included. So I don't know what the rush is on this pocket park. Somebody else buys the building, so be it. That's economic development. So I would just think we should wait on this, use that, you're not handing this in until July, use it on other parks. I like Morris Street. If you have another park in mind, that's fine, but there just, there's no equitable funding here for parks in town. There's some that are completely neglected and some get all the funds. So that's how I feel about it. And that's it. Thank you.
Counsel Steve.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I, back at the subcommittee meeting, I had asked about setting up a, an executive session so we could actually talk about this, since it was brought up that these appraisals are not subject to public disclosure, at least as we know them, and I have not seen anything like that happen. So I really would like to see us talk about this and clarify how much, how much this property is actually worth, what, I, I have no problem with the concept in itself, and I do think that, that if it does end up getting tied into the rail trail, I think it would be nice, but I really want to see what this project is worth so that we know that we're getting a decent value for the, for the dollar, for the money we're spending, because this is public funding, even if it is a grant, even if it is grant money. So.
Very good. Counsel Lozlo.
How much actual land are we getting that we're moving to purchase?
The entire parcel.
What's that?
The entire parcel.
Which is?
As counsel.
Quarter acre, half acre?
One sixteenth of an acre.
A sixteenth of an acre.
About a sixteenth of an acre.
For $250,000.
$250,000.
I, I know we can't get into the appraisal and that discussion, I understand that. I, I agree with Gus. I do like the concept, but $250,000, I mean, ladies and gentlemen, I mean, there's so much more we could do for the town than in a postage stamp, sixteenth of an acre. Thank you, Ms. Jim.
Ms. Dean.
Yes, without addressing point for point, the many things that Counsel Marketti brought up that I'd love to address, I don't want to take too much of your time tonight. I do just want to doubly emphasize, I do have in the motion there, consistent with the urban renewal plan, we have to trust these very well-paid consultants that we often comment on are very expensive, are strategic in their suggestions, and so in the urban renewal plan, you have had since 2011 to take that property for the rail trail as the design would be complemented. The $250,000 does not represent the entire acquisition. Happy to bring this up in executive session, but thank you for bringing up Counselor Steve's that this cannot be discussed otherwise. And the reason we're coming to you for the land, or from the Land Water Conservation Fund to the park grant is because the grant administrator is looking out for the town and trying to help us. Land Water Conservation Funds can sometimes be delayed by two years because they're federal funds that are, they can just be held, and the timelines are harder to, to marry up to, and this would be a better match. It would be a 50-50 versus the 70-30. And the reason we're sort of rushing is because we're trying to line this up with the tip because we can tuck the design in through VHB's tip project, and then we can couple the, the work with the tip project. We can actually go out for concurrent work through that bid, and that would take, that would potentially reduce the amount of the cost to, to do the work. Hence the up two. We're hoping it would come in.
Counsel Steve.
Um, yes, thank you. I just wanted to point out, I just quickly looked up the assessors page for the current, the current year's valuation of the total property, land and buildings, is $61,000.
Excuse me, repeat that?
It's assessed at $61,000. It's .06 acres, as Counsel Marketti pointed out. Oh, and would this, would this grant also be covering demolition of the property? I'm assuming that's the intention, right?
Correct.
Is that covered in the grant as well?
Mm-hmm.
So do we have a rough estimate of what demolition cost would actually be?
I'm starting to feel like we're probably, you know, we're, we're delving into numbers, and I don't, I don't feel comfortable, so I would prefer, if you wanted to discuss it at executive session, that it was left at that. These are real estate transaction-related things.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we postpone this subject to executive session discussion.
Second motion.
Very good. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Counsel Jovan.
Do you think other councils could have an opportunity to discuss this grant before we vote to postpone it to executive session? Because I'd like to respond to Counsel Marketti's point before. I have no problem postponing it for further discussion, but I think I'd like an opportunity to be heard.
Certainly. Counsel Jovan.
You guys.
Withdraw my second.
Okay. I'll postpone it for a moment.
All right. Counsel Jovan.
Thank you. Through you, I, I understand the whole concept that what we're trying to do, and I do welcome a conversation in executive session. I just wanted to comment on Counsel Marketti's point that, about Morris Street Field, and he has been very passionate about that field and about what we can do, and I, I'm looking at the whole approach of what we're trying to do as a, as a town through economic development, the rail trail, and how all these pieces fit, and in the memo, it states that we got $400,000 to do McCann Field, correct? $400,000 to do McCann, which is Henry Street Field, right? So Henry Street's been addressed. We do not control West Street Field or Dresser Street Field, that is on the school department. So the only field, to Counsel Marketti's point, that is a town recreational field that we haven't addressed is, is West Street Field. I mean, it's Morris Street and that complex. And I certainly agree, and I, and I'm trying to look at, I would like to see if the council could support some kind of either ad hoc committee or committee to take a look, to sit on Morris Street and, and bring a group of individuals together to talk about Morris Street Field and what the vision for that field is, and work with the town manager and the finance department. We do have other pockets of money. We do have the ARPA money. We do have the health, not that we want to tap into stabilization, but we do have stabilization money. But develop, what is the vision for that field without delaying the, delaying the downtown economic appointment and develop a plan to address Morris Street? And how does that work into the community center that's up there? And, and do a comprehensive evaluation of that whole area and come up with a concrete plan as, and work with our money and federal monies to say, this is what we would like to address for that neighborhood? And, and work it as a comprehensive plan for the community. So thank you for the time and allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Just a second. I want to make a note. Just a second. Thank you for your indulgence. Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I understand what everybody tried to do, save money, and people think it's a lot of money, but I think that railroad is being processed for a long time, and now we're almost there. And I think we discussed that in the past, and we give her the okay to move forward and get more information to be able to keep going with the plan and the railroad and approve the downtown. And every time she get to point like, okay, we're ready to roll, we stop, we delay time, and then we go discuss it, and at the end, we vote yes. Why we want to waste the time? The, the ball is rolling. Why you want to stop it? And I understand where Counsel Marketti and Counsel Lozlo come from, $250,000, but this is the market right now. This is what the building going, especially in downtown. It's not going to get more cheaper. It's going to keep going up and up and up. If we move forward 10 years ago, when I believe the plan was designed at that time, we wouldn't be paying $250,000, but because the council, they keep delaying thing, stopping thing, nothing is being, moving forward in the town. Thank you.
Counsel Ryan, then Counsel Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. To Ms. Dean, would holding off for two weeks to allow us to have an executive session to go over appraisal amounts affect the ability of you being able to submit this grant on time?
No, and I just, I should also clarify that I have a bit of a reluctance to complete a full application for the council if I have any concerns that it's not going to be approved. My time is incredibly stretched trying to do as much as I can for the town, and so I pick And so I pick and choose my priorities based on, you know, how I think it's best spent. So just understand that's why I didn't bring a full application here tonight is, one, I'm either backed up with so much other stuff or two, there's a chance that you may not approve it and I need to, you know, wait until I have that green light. So no, I have no problem waiting the two weeks. It's due July 14th and so I could just focus on it the two weeks after that.
Okay, if I can continue, I, I would support waiting till we had an executive session to discuss, go over all the information. It's a lot of money to go off of without having all that appraisal information and insight from you about this piece of land. We, we want to do good work, an extra two weeks to make sure we do our due diligence and understand how this money is being spent is not inappropriate considering we have plenty of time to submit before deadline. So that would be my recommendation as well. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Steves, then Counsel Lozo.
Um, to, I was more or less going to say a lot of what Jackie just said. But also I just wanted to point out that, that even whatever we decide with this particular parcel, it does not necessarily change the fact that a lot of us, we've already voted in favor of the rail trail as a whole. And that the project, that, that project, hopefully the grant money for that project comes through and we can complete that as we've already talked about at length on several occasions. I think that would be a wonderful project to get this done, especially going through the downtown corridor. I don't, and I think when we talk about doing this, this particular parcel is just kind of an adjunct to the, to the trail itself. And that part, that trail could be done without this parcel and this little pocket park. However, to, to address what Counsel Dow said a little while ago, I think that, as I mentioned earlier, you know, making sure that we know what the money is for and what, what the actual, the, the numbers are is simply doing our due diligence for the, for the taxpayers. Even if it is grant money, it's still ultimately tax money.
Counsel Lozo.
I don't want to prolong the discussion, but I have to say, I agree with all the previous speakers, including Joe Dow. And I, I have to tell you, it's, as, as Jack Dovin always said, the plan. You want to talk about Moore Street, where's the plan? We have a plan on the rail. We have the intent of what we want to do with the rail trail. We're not guaranteed that money yet. And even on this parcel of land, the only thing I want to do is due diligence that we look at it and if we have to go into executive session and, you know, there's M&amp;D domain, there's expense, there's demolition, there's, there's a lot more there than just $250,000. If, if it was that clean, then, you know, for a sixteenth of an acre, I don't know of any market, not even the market we're in, where that's located, that that would be valued that high. So for me, I'd rather, if we can take the time to go into executive session and lay out the plan and it fits, if all the pieces fit and they're moving, I'm going to favor it. But I just, I'm taken aback by the, the volume of money that has to go into such a little
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just remind the counselors, first of all, I, I, I agree with Counsel Marquetti. This is something that we have not forgotten about. This is something that we've discussed about possibly utilizing CDPG funds. The park has not been forgotten, but it's just taking a long time as we, just like streets, it's taken, you know, taken decades to get to a point and then it's going to take a few years to get to a better point, hopefully for us down the road. I just reiterate though, that the tip project that's going to happen in 2024, I mean, this is all tied, could be tied into it. We have a, we have a trail already through there. So even if, you know, knock on wood, we don't, hopefully we'll receive the funding for the full purchase and the, the cleaning up of the rail trail. This is just the caveat on top of it and it's part of a plan. And that we paid pretty damn good money to have a plan set up in place to, to hopefully build our town to what we would look like, we would like to look, what we would like it to look like in a few years. So, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Counsel Steves.
Would now be the appropriate time to start that motion?
Yep.
Executing it.
Can I get that motion? I can barely hear.
To, to postpone voting on this until we've, subject to that executive session?
Do we have a date certain for that?
We need a date to.
To, to the, I guess, do you want to do the executive session at the next council meeting?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
June 27th. Everyone understand? The, the motion postponed? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one. Postponed until July 27th. June 27th.
23rd.
Twenty, 27th.
Thank you, Peg.
Twenty-one is 27.
It's the 27th, yeah.
Thank you, Peg. Okay, moving along. Item number 25, vote to approve the community center transfer request of $130.45 from account number 001549-543000, M&amp;I Building, to account number 001549-523000, Water Sewer to cover Water Sewer account. Allow the town manager to sign related documents. So.
Second.
Counsel Dovin.
Thank you. This is unanimous by all at the, at the meeting. For Counsel Marquetti's knowledge, I did ask why they didn't account for this in their budget.
I'm sorry. What was that? I didn't catch that.
It was just, you know, we did ask, this was just an unanticipated cost because of the sewer price. And it's a Counsel Marquetti question that usually asked, so I did ask it for you, Counsel.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 26, vote to approve the town manager's transfer request of $50.57 from account number 001123-530000, specialized services, to account number 001123-578000, miscellaneous expenses to cover Department Head lunch, May 19, 2022, and allow the town manager to sign related documents. So moved.
Second.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the, by the General Government Subcommittee, this large bill of $50 was just for coffee, donuts and snacks and the likes for the Department Head meeting.
Any discussion? Counsel Lozo.
Any future dinners like this? If you call Joe Dow and I will donate it.
And you?
Yeah, you and I.
Thank you. I'd be happy to have, be your partner for donation.
I, I thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. What we were trying to do here is, you know, we talked about in the course of the budget, some appreciation for staff and things, but this is one of the first times we really had the opportunity to get everybody in a room. You know, we, we did online virtual meetings with staff during COVID and things and we, we don't always have a meeting every month, but we try and get folks together and go around the room. And it was during budget season and we thought it'd be a nice, and we, we shopped around to make sure we could get discounts. My staff did. But it, it really was to get people together, get them talking, sharing ideas and appreciate the work that they've been doing. So thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 27, vote to transfer $82,500 from principal on long-term debt number 001710.591000 to interest on long-term debt number 001710.591500 to cover the final debt payments for fiscal year 2022 and allow the town manager to sign related documents.
So moved. Second.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this was recommended unanimously by the General Government Subcommittee.
Very good. Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 28, ordered that the authorized unused balances of loan orders of the town council are hereby rescinded. Amount number $225,000, sewer generator transfer switch passed June 15, 2015. $350,000, water engineering low storage tank, June 15, 2015. $1,910,900, construction of biotower system, June 20, 2016. $6 million, Town of Charlton water mains, May 1, 2017. $99, electrical upgrades at wastewater treatment plant, June 25, 2018. $1 million, Main Street water main replacement, May 28, 2020. Two-thirds vote is required.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended by the General Government Subcommittee unanimously. Just so people understand, this is unused loan balances. So this isn't money that we actually have sitting in accounts. This is affecting our borrowing capacity. So this is money that we have to borrow on these items. In order to free up borrowing capacity for other items, we have to release this, these holds. So it's not that we only, we have $6 million sitting there from the Town of Charlton water mains. It's that we have $6 million which we have left authorized to use to borrow to do work on those that we do not need.
Right. Counsel Marquetti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess that was the question I was going to ask. Are, are these projects completed and is this unencumbered funds? That's the question that I had.
Through the chair, thank you. What is the case in this is in each one of these, either we used a, a different source of funding since we didn't need to borrow, so we saved some interest costs. In the case of the, we kind of went through line by line in the General Government Subcommittee. In the case of the Town of Charlton water mains, we had to authorize the full amount of the project at $10 million, but we got $5 million from the state and we only had to borrow four. So that's why we're rescinding it. So the, these are loan authorizations, like Counsel Ryan had said, we did not borrow the money and at this time we do not need the money. Do we not, do not need to borrow? So if there's any specific questions on any of the certain projects, I can answer for you.
And the other question I have is why, why is two-thirds vote required?
Anything that has to do with debt by, by the, by the law, it's two-thirds, it's actually two-thirds roll call vote required.
Well, I was reading the Division of Local Services, borrowing authorization, rescission or reduction. Cities and towns and districts may rescind or reduce borrowing authorizations only to extent that no liabilities have been incurred and no third-party rights have vested, have vested by issuing debt or executing contracts with a project. Recision or reduction of votes are approved by a majority vote of the legislative body. So am I missing something or unless it's in the charter? I thought, well, maybe it's in the charter.
I, I couldn't hear that well. So you're reading something from the charter? Is that what you're saying?
Is there something in the charter that requires two-thirds vote or?
No, it's a mass, it's a mass general law. Where are you reading from?
I'm reading from DLS, Department of Local Services. So if it's mass general law?
It's mass general law, yes.
That's fine. I thank you.
Good. Anyone else? Very well. Roll call vote, please.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Dovin.
Yes.
Counsel Lozo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
And Counsel Daniel.
Yes. Vote passes eight zero. Item number 29, vote to appropriate $139,148.38 free cash to the stabilization fund number 0840.
So moved. Second.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the General Government Subcommittee. This amount being put in will bring the total amount to over $5 million in stabilization.
Any discussion? Counsel Dovin.
Through you, I guess, to the finance director. Why, why just the odd amount like that? Is that the balance that's left?
That's the balance of the remaining free cash.
Does that take into account the reductions that were in free cash from the votes for the capital plan?
Yes. So that's the exact amount left after the capital plan, the OPEB allotment, which is on the agenda tonight, and the $30,000 on the agenda for the TPW pollution abatement project, which is also on the agenda tonight. So that's the remaining balance of free cash.
Through you to the finance director.
Certainly.
I, I thought the fire department, forestry truck was somewhere around 250 and it was taken out of the capital plan. Correct? So was there not going to be any money for, to transfer to stabilization based on that?
Through the chair, the fiscal year 23 capital plan was voted at $1,00833. And also what came out of free cash previously was a vote for the West Street infrastructure improvements. And it was also up for consideration for ARPA. So we said if any of that ends up being funded by ARPA funds rather than free cash, that we could transfer some of that to stabilization in the future. I'm not sure if that was your question, but.
No, I, I thought the forestry truck was like 225 or 250. We took that out of the capital plan.
Correct.
And this amount is only 139. Was there a different amount that was originally going to go into OPEB? I, I've been just trying to figure out the numbers.
Right. The town manager and I discussed the OPEB and 350,000 we're recommending to go into there, which is probably a little bit more than what we were originally thinking of. So that's probably why it wasn't around the 250,000.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering when we could start funding the capital stabilization account since most of the free cash goes into capital. Maybe we should start putting some of these funds into the capital stabilization account at some point. I would like to see that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 30, vote to appropriate $350,000 from free cash to the other post-employment benefits OPEB trust fund project number 83600.
So moved.
Second. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended three to one by the General Government Subcommittee with Counsel Steves opposed. He cited his consistent opposition to OPEB as he feels is a double, a double dipping of funds since we currently pay out OPEB benefits.
Very good. Discussion. Counsel Steves.
That pretty much summarizes my viewpoint. And, but I also want to add that I would like to see this money being used on a more current basis for some of the stuff that we really need to get done. I don't like the idea of stick, sitting it there, letting it sit there for, you know, 25 years and to pay off something that we are already paying. I've never, I've always disliked the, the way the OPEB thing is structured. It's kind of the same situation for a while ago. A while ago, I worked at the postal service and there was a big furor over the issues of the postal service being forced to prepay long-term. I don't know if it was exactly OPEB or something, but it was something very similar over the course of decades and that was bankrupting them. And this is the same, very similar situation as far as I see. And I don't, I don't see it as being a good use of our funds when we're already paying the retirees both their benefits and their pensions. We are, we have always paid it. We've never had a problem with paying it. I understand the argument that, that was made at GenGov, that there might theoretically be a time when our budget can't support that. But then I hate to say it, but our budget won't be able to support a lot of other things if that ends up being the situation. And we will have to end up having to make cuts someplace. You know, we are paying them. I have no, no desire to hurt our retirees by any means, but I don't think this is fair to the taxpayers as a whole.
Very good. Very good. Counsel Ryan.
I just wanted to follow up with Ms. Harrow because at the General Government Subcommittee, I asked what was the outstanding, what was the outstanding liability Southbridge has? And you didn't have an exact number at that time. Do you have that number tonight?
I actually do not have the exact number, but I believe it was about 40, 40-plus million dollars.
Seems the manager might have a response.
Ms. Anderson.
So when I did the budget presentation, we had a draft audit from last year. And so from the end of last fiscal year, I had had that we had an unfunded, unfunded OPEB balance of $53.5 million. So our funded ratio at this point is we're about 3.97% funded. But when you look at what we've done for pension, which we're required, we're about 75, just under 75% funded. And that's because we're required. But, you know, this is something that the rating agencies also look at. They want to make sure that you're, you're keeping up to date with these things because at some point there will be a problem. And the idea is to, to build a, a fund in there to help offset the costs as they continue to grow. So it has been an area that I think we haven't been funding at the rate we should. So where, when we came back and looked the other day, we thought maybe we should put our stabilization fund balance is, is very healthy. So why not take some of this money and increase slightly our OPEB contribution?
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, through you. I agree with Counsel Steves. I mean, I understand the, the impact that unfunded liabilities have. It was Chelsea that had unfunded liabilities that bankrupted the town. But this is a prime example about how another agency is telling you how to run your town that, and I get we have to fund this and the bond and agencies, so they really have us over a barrel. But to put this burden on the towns years later because they didn't plan how pensions were going to go, it's, it's a tough nut because I think, for me, I know we were putting 250 away and there was a plan at one time to use solar money to try to, to fund that. That was at least what was told to us by the former Town Manager, that we were going to take solar money to use this to, that would be the funding source for it, just like we looked at, hey, how are we going to fund the roads plan? Well, we'll use marijuana money. And this was, the prime example was, we'll use this solar income to fund this OPEB and get a regular revenue source in without impacting, you know, and it's great that we have free cash, but $350,000 would go a long way on some other projects that we have. So I'll reluctantly support it tonight, but just too bad that we're in this position.
Very good.
For the record, too, we're not the only town. This is a Massachusetts issue throughout the Commonwealth. So for the taxpayers out there, this is not something that Town of Southbridge has. There's many communities that are struggling with the same, same issue, just for the record.
Counsel Steves.
I'm going to go slightly off topic, just slightly, but it's certainly related to the fact that the taxpayers keep getting tattooed by long-term costs on the grounds of the massive amounts of interest we borrow for projects. You know, I think if we could get rid of that, I might be more, more willing to do something like this. But when we spend more than half of our money for projects goes to interest, that is grossly unfair and that needs to change.
Counsel Mark Hedy.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So to the Town Manager, what is the minimum amount that we are required to put into this?
There's no minimum on OPEB. That's the difference. The pension, we're mandated as to what our requirements are to put in there, but OPEB, it's left alone. That's why a lot of communities haven't really funded it and that's why we're at only just under 4% funded because we're not required to make annual minimum contributions.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? One, two, six to two, motion passes. Item number 31, vote to appropriate $30,637.62 from free cash to the DPW pollution abatement project number 0335 to fund amendment number 17 with Gannett Fleming for Engineering and Environmental Services. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously by the General Government Subcommittee.
Any discussion? Counsel Mark Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. For three years now, I think this has been about the same amount of money for the DPW pollution abatement project going to Gannett Fleming for Engineering and Environmental Services. So I don't, that's the old cotton property. I don't really know what, what's going on there, why we keep spending money on an engineering. To look at this contamination, it's contaminated. Just, I'm kind of curious as to when, when we are going to be required to actually clean it up instead of just constantly paying for someone just to look oversee on this project. I know it's going to be very expensive. I thought we recently, I thought we recently voted on looking at some brownfield grants and I'm just wondering if we could continue to look at that and try and get some brownfield grants to pay for some of this. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Steves.
Yeah, just to answer Counsel Mark Hedy's question and more for the public, I guess, and for you. As I understand it, the whole reason we keep doing this is the feds and the state keep coming forward with changes to the proposal to cap the project. And they keep coming up with little things that they don't like and that they want our engineers to change, which is Gannett Fleming. And this project has been in limbo since basically we bought the property, as I think you're aware, and has become a huge, a huge money pit that I think if we had had even half an idea of how much of a mess this would have been, we would have never bought that property. We probably should not have.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 32, vote to appropriate $422,884.66 from water retained earnings to the water stabilization fund number 0845.
So moved.
Second. I don't know who had this in committee. Anyone have this in committee? Counsel, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe, speaking with Ms. Harrow earlier today, we have to make some adjustments to the amount to appropriate. So I think we were going to ask that this be taken up at a later date. So.
Make a motion to postpone to June 27.
We have a vote to postpone until June 27. All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Number, item number 33, amendments to the stoppage zoning map to change the following. A, changing 333 East Main Street through 505 East Main Street from manufacturing to general business. B, changing 1, 6, and 28 Santasdale Road and MAP 44 Lot 17 from manufacturing to general business. C, changing 23, 27, 31, and 35 Gulf Street from manufacturing to R2. D, changing 39 Old Woodstock Road from manufacturing to R2. E, changing 70, 78 Jenison Street from Office Research to R2. F, changing MAP 44 Lot 29 and 37 Kingsley Street from Office Research to R2. G, changing 72 Doughty Street and MAP 44 Lots 47, 50, and 56 Doughty Street from Office Research to Manufacturing. H, changing 66, 73, 94, 105, 121, 126, 134, and 234 Ashland Avenue from Office Research to Manufacturing. Third reading, June 6, 2022. Any discussion? Counsel Steves.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose, based on the discussions we've had in previous meetings on this issue, I would like to propose that we, instead of changing, where'd it go, 23, 27, 31, and 35 Gulf Street for manufacturing R2, I think we should be changing it from manufacturing to general business. That would still allow the, most of the proposals that we have heard about that property, those properties to be, to still be able to happen, which they wouldn't be able to happen in the residential districts. So that's my motion.
We have a motion.
Was that a new motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Very good. Counsel Ozon.
Our question, this is where the, what I call the Stanco building, the commercial buil, the manufacturing?
Yeah, that's the Gulf Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for further clarification, this is that church building, correct? It got changed over? I don't support this change. The, there's a, there's only one property that's not being used for residential right now in that lot zone. It's the church and it is currently, and the one property that is being used, it's a church. So a church is going to be put anywhere. It makes more sense with the general neighborhood to make it all uniform instead of having this one strip that would be out of place in comparison to the rest of the neighborhood. I think the planning board has put in a lot of effort. They had a public hearing. They made changes based on public input that made sense. I wouldn't recommend making this change and doing a spot zone. That, that would be my ultimate concern. Thank you.
Counsel Steves.
It's actually not a spot zone because it would be attached, I would have, I would, my point is have it be attached to that red zone there. It's the neighboring, it's the neighboring section of the green zone.
But the rest of those properties are residential.
Yeah, it's that one side of the street which would be attached to the red zone, which is, it's not spot zoning. Yes, I recognize that they're residential, but it's, but they're, but it's currently a manufact, it is currently manufacturing. So they're, that's not going to change the fact that they're, they're residential houses. That's not going to make any change to that. They're still being used as residences. In fact, it's probably actually kinder to them to be in a general business zone than it is to be in a manufacturing zone.
But I wanted to go to a residential.
Could the Counsel speak in the mic, please, so we could hear? Please use the mic.
Are you talking to me or to Counsel Ryan?
Well, point of order, you have two Counselors talking not through the Chair and one's not talking through a microphone, so us out here can't hear that Counselor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel Ozon.
This particular parcel was created with a manufacturing, and again, I lived in that neighborhood my whole life, well, most of my life, when I was younger in high school. So the building was, the way it's constructed, all the parking's in behind it, all the manufacturing deliveries are behind it. The only thing is the front office is on the street side. So it's almost like it was built to be there. And the last thing I want to do as a Counselor is hurt business and leave it manufacturing so in the future, if the church moves out or sells it, that it's a viable business. I mean, we keep catering to housing, but if then when you're done with all the housing, we need to lean more into industry. I mean, that's how you widen your tax base. So for me, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I'm very familiar with this. I think Counsel Steves is right and I, I'm going to support the amendment. Thank you.
Counsel Ryan.
Clarification question. Is that the property being mentioned usable in today's manufacturing standards?
Yes.
From, to the planning person?
Potentially as a machine shop or something similar. However, the church, I believe, does plan on removing the loading dock, which is along the side of the building, as well as making numerous changes to the building to make it more functional for their use as a church.
Anyone else? Counsel Jovan.
Through you. So the amendment, though, is just to change it from manufacturing to a general business use, not to the R2 use.
Yeah, it'll be general business, not R2.
Correct.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Very well.
I misunderstood. I thought he was, I'm sorry, the previous speaker, I thought that we were going to leave that as is, not general business. I thought we were going to leave it as.
No, that was, that was to make it, to change it to general business rather than R2. Because, because if we leave it as, if we leave it as manufacturing, it's, it makes, to me, it makes more sense as a part of the general business zone because some of the things that are already being allowed in manu, as in manufacturing can be done in general business, too, as I understand, by special apartment. Is that correct for the most part?
Yes.
And with this particular building to, to apply to what Counsel Ryan just said a few minutes ago, is that if this, what, assuming the church, if the church leaves there, it could still be used as a general business facility in various capacities, even if it is, even if they do, for example, lose their loading dock or whatever, they could still be used for some other general business purpose. Whereas if it goes into residential and the church leaves, it will never be used for anything business because it will be a residential property. Except maybe a home base business.
Counsel Dow and then Counsel Ozon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. It's like he keep coming back and we argue the same thing. He'll even come back. Can we leave that only parcel with the churches, only Pacific, well, now is being zoned as to move forward?
No.
Then can you explain why?
Of course. If we left just that parcel as manufacturing, it would be spot zoning, which is illegal by general law, federal law, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's not possible to do that. We'd have to tie it into some other parcel somewhere that is adjacent manufacturing.
Can I continue?
Continue.
The other parcel, it's look like a commercial, like they can be used or only houses.
The remainder of the parcels on the street?
The rest, yeah.
They are all houses.
Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Ozon.
They're all apartment buildings. They're not single-family homes that are in this district. If we leave it the way it is, it's still legal as a manufacturing. It becomes a spot zone when we change it to residential or general business. You can never go back to manufacturing. That's spot zoning.
No, it's not.
Leaving it the way it is is not spot zoning because we, it's a pre-existing non-conforming. What you're doing is you're flipping it into another zone where you cannot go back. That's why spot zoning would, like somebody said at one meeting, oh, we can go back to it if somebody want, no, that's now we're spot zoning. Leaving it the way it is leaves it as its full value, manufacturing and general business. So I, I'm not in favor of either proposal, to be honest with you. I want to leave it the way it is as manufacturing.
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you. So first off, through you, I want to thank Eric. I, I stated that I would go and ride that area and he took me out to that area and I thank him for that. And I certainly understand the thought process behind the planning board that the other, the other properties are these residential two families and, and you have this one building that was in the middle of this road. And then I look at, to Counsel Loza's point, before that hill went there when they redid Woodstock Road, North Woodstock, North Woodstock, North Woodstock Road, that had a lot of furniture on Main Street. So it looked, hey, it's a manufacturing building right there. So I certainly understand the thought process behind the planning board as to, hey, the majority of this area is residential. That's perhaps our thought to, to leave it. But you have that one manufacturing possibility building. Yes, it is a church. So if they're already allowed to be a church there, the other parcels, I don't believe anybody would ever build any other manufacturing there outside of that one building, but that building's been there for manufacturing. Leave it manufacturing and let them do whatever they want. If something comes up later on, let it come before the board, but that's my point. I certainly understand the, the rest of the, the properties certainly had no problem with the way it looked and, and how they wanted to go about that. But that one piece of property, yes, it's right there in the residential area, but it's been there forever. So I'd say just leave it manufacturing. Let the church go in there. If they stay there for 100 years, they stay there for 100 years and we never talk about it.[1800.63] there for 100 years, and we never talk about it. If they leave and that, and we take a look at a future planning board takes a look at that, whatever their plans are to reconfigure the building, and at that point, it really doesn't look like it's going to be able to be manufacturing, then bring it back before the council. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Ozso.
The reason why I feel so strong about this, the Director of Inspections came into one of my business areas, was looking for space for manufacturing. And it seems to me that we do not have a lot of manufacturing areas outside of the American Optical, which constantly everybody that comes to town ends up going into the American Optical. There are other parts of our town that can do manufacturing in, in various other zones. But, when you have one that's manufacturing, and it's going to be a church, why lose the value of the manufacturing lot? What if a company comes in and they want to buy it, make your manufacturing go to the, the planning board? Let's keep it manufacturing. And if it, if it changes, let the planning board, or the future deal with it. But, right now, to turn around and say, well, we just want residential in this area. We're, we're short, we have plenty of residential, we're short on manufacturing. If it's about jobs and economic development, it's not in housing. It's in manufacturing. Thank you.
Counsel Steve.
I was thinking along the same kind of lines, but I was thinking that, that, at the moment, just to make a point, that the motion on the floor is to change it to general business, which is a broader spectrum of businesses. From you, through you to Eric, which kinds of businesses can go in general business that cannot go into manufacturing, or vice versa?
It's mostly retail uses that are allowed in general business that are not allowed in manufacturing. And conversely, uses that are allowed in manufacturing that are not allowed in general business include adult uses and mines, essentially.
Which we don't have any of, anyway.
Unless somebody does a test pit and finds oil, no. Or, or diamonds, or, or, who knows what else. Lithium, whatever.
In that area, they're not going to.
Yeah.
Okay. In effect, for practical purposes, then, they are essentially the same, for all practical purposes.
I'm sorry.
I said, for all practical purposes, then, as far as Southbridge is concerned, they're essentially the same.
They're very similar.
Yeah.
The general business does expand upon the retail uses.
Right.
Allowing restaurants, drive-throughs, et cetera, et cetera, which is, you know, the main reason for the, the large piece of red that was previously orange.
Exactly. That's, that's what I was thinking. That's why I wanted, that's exactly why I wanted to attach it to that section that's red.
Because it makes more sense that way.
Mr. Dunphy.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ramsey.
To carry on that thought, multifamily uses are also allowed in general business that are not allowed in manufacturing. So.
Which is what these current.
That would also make the apartment buildings and multifamily housing there to be more legal than previous.
Exactly. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Ozso.
Mr. Chairman, I misunderstood the motion. I'd like to withdraw my second on the amendment.
Very good. Is there a second to the motion? You're being done the motion. The amendment does not advance.
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel Ozso.
I'd like to make an amendment, changing C by re-, by leaving it as manufacturing and not changing it.
Second. So, in other words, you're moving to delete that line?
Yeah.
Just remove the line.
Then eliminate C, if that's the answer. I'll make a motion that we eliminate C.
Second.
And there's a second. Very good. Discussion on that amendment. Very well. All those in favor? Hands up, please. One, two, three, four, five, six. Those against? Motion, the amendment passes seven to one. To delete item C. Any further discussion on making any amendments to the proposed zoning map changes? Very good. Let's move on to item number 34. Vote to accept the amendments to the Southbridge zoning map.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor?
Roll call, please, Mr..
Roll call. Very good. Roll call vote.
Counsel Adams.
Sorry. What was that? Yes.
Do you vote? Yes. Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Lous.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
And Counsel Steve.
Very good. Motion passes eight zero. The zoning map amm-, uh, changes have been approved.
Thank you very much.
As amended.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manager.
I want to apologize. It's my fault. I had asked Counsel Adams a question right when the roll call was being taken, so.
Thank you. Item number 35, discuss review of the Town Manager's Performance Evaluation and Goals and Objectives Scoring Packet.
I'll go first.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make note real quick. I know where the fans are going off over here, and it, they don't sound like, it makes a lot of sound over there, but they do. So, if you're not speaking in the mic, I can, please, please do speak in the mic, so we can hear everything that's happening. All right. So, in front of you, I changed up, I know we received our Town Council Packet. I made some changes to it on the first page, I'm, I'm sorry, the second page.
Did you make copies?
I made copies for everybody. Did you not get one?
You did not, sir.
There you go. Missing link. There it is. There. Found it. All right. So, I just want to go over this really quick. The Town Manager has a presentation to give. The, the final tabulation score sheet, when we, when I talked about the performance evaluate, when I put the performance evaluation categories together, they're the same ones as we voted on last year, and it's the same council. The goals and objectives were, were approved by the Town Council on November, I believe it was November 1st, 2021, so I moved forward. The real big change here, besides the goals and objectives, is the scoring sheet, scoring sheet of one through five by zero through three. That's based off the ICMA guidelines and recommendations. Also, under, where you'll see performance, you'll see far below, this is on the first page, far below expectations, all the way to far exceeds expectations. That is also off the ICMA guidelines for Town Manager evaluations. I may note in here, councils will provide a score of one to five only. Do not fractionalize these points. Another star on here I put on is, if a counselor gives a Town Manager a one, two, which would be far below expectations and below expectations, or a five, which far exceeds expectations in any category, that counselor must provide factual evidence in writing under council comments. If there's no factual evidence provided in writing, then the score will not be tabulated into the Town Manager's score. This is similar to last year, though it was a zero and a three score. The due date for the evaluation themselves will be June 17th to the HR department, and only a hard copy will be acceptable due to privacy laws. I would highly recommend that, with the, as the counselors are, are doing this evaluation, they set up a time to have a conversation with the Town Manager, to have a good conversation, because there may be something that we missed, or he missed, or whatever it may be. So, you could have, obviously, a professional conversation about his evaluation from you as a counselor. The last page, the very last page, is a scoring rubric. So, you think, if you see one to 26 is far below, 27 through 30 is below expectations, 31 to 35 achieves expectations, 36 to 40 exceeds expectations, and 41 to 45 far exceeds expectations. This was based off a simple A, B, C, D, F calculation that we, we all learn in school. And I, I will answer any questions I possibly can for you at this point in time.
Counsel Jovan.
No, through you. I'd like to thank Counsel Adams for, Counsel Daniel for putting this together. I'd just like to make a motion that we accept the Town Manager's Performance Evaluation Goals and Objectives as a evaluation instrument for the Town Manager's performance.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present? Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
What's up?
I guess. Do we have a date when, when you wanted these back? 17 June. And it, it needs to be turned into 17th, yes, to the HR department, Adriana. If you need envelopes, grab one from Noah, or I'll bring some in, put them in your boxes.
Counsel Ryan.
Can I have a copy sent electronically to all the councils as well?
Absolutely. I'll get that to you sometime tomorrow. Is that all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Manager.
So, I think you should be able to see that now, Mr. Chairman. Sorry about the delay. So, when Counsel Adams had presented this to me, and I had talked with Counsel Jovan last fall, we have the review period going from September, when you did my first review, to present day. So, that's approximately nine months, eight to nine months. And in November, the council adopted some goals from me, and at that time, they understood that I had things on my plate, but that, you know, you were looking for me to start some of those. So, what I thought I would do is just give you an update on the goals that were presented last November, and then also an overview of the types of activities that I've been working on since last September, just so that people are aware what, what we do. And most of the things I have on here are exclusive of a lot of the day-to-day things that we do here at Town Hall, which would include regular dealing with staff, correspondents, constituent services, council questions, and meetings. So, I'll try and go through these as quickly as possible. One of the first goals was personnel and financial. It was implementation of the Human Resources Town Hall Reorganization Plan, and there were several expectations. In order to minimize the, the presentation, I didn't put all the expectations. But, basically, the results here are in line with the expectations that we were to hire an HR Director, Assistant Town Manager, and a Benefits Coordinator, Specialist. And I did accomplish that. We've already had Ms. Rubena and Ms. Dondero working on the improving federal and state reporting timeliness, and the documents that we reapply from the EEOC, the Equal Opportunity Documents, 1095 relative to insurance, Affordable Care Act documents, as well as health insurance responsibility disclosures. Human Resources and the Town Manager have reviewed the existing performance evaluation tool, as, as well as the forms, which, in our opinion, are not appropriate. So, HR is evaluating not only other municipalities, but our form to create a professional development goals and merit-based tool going forward, which we plan to roll out within the next six months. One of the other expectations is we would do a comprehensive review of bylaws. Ms. Rubena has been taking that role on. She has been going through, cover to cover, our bylaws, and when she's done, the two of us will go through and submit an updated copy for the council to review. So, we've been working on that one. One of the second goals I was given was communications, and the, the expectation there was the Town Manager to improve communications to public and increase civic engagement in town. And really, that centered around the new website, which rolled out in December, which featured translation capabilities. One of the expectations was we would address translation services. And within our new website, we do have the ability, there's a floating icon from Google Translation there, that if somebody were to click on it, you can get it translated in any language that you prefer. HR, as well as the Town Clerk's Office, staff has been assisting with translation services. So, some of our key documents, especially around the Town Clerk's voting, and now HR is helping with other documents in Town Hall. We have several employees that are bilingual, so we're working on that. Upon arrival of our new IT Director, we will hopefully connect up our push technology. Part of the reason going to the new website was the ability to connect the backend to social media sites, so that we can resurrect our presence on Facebook, as well as Twitter, and that whatever postings we're making to our website in terms of news flashes and calendar updates would be automatically pushed out to those other venues. As I alluded to earlier, what we're looking to do, to do outreach to civic engagement is we're compiling lists of open and vacant positions on the boards and committees, which we will be listing, not only mentioning and announcements, but we'll feature those on the, the website and push those out as needed. There was five parts to the infrastructure and asset management goals that you wanted me to start looking at. The first was to develop a strategy and implementation of alternatives to the current curbside collection program. This is ongoing. As you know, I had been meeting with Counselor Adams, as well as our staff, to discuss strategies. Part of that included reviewing the ballot and override procedures, looking at cost projections, working with Mr. Pelletier and Ms. Smith. We've made updated presentations to Town Council. As you know, you've adopted the notion that you'd like to continue with the curbside. So, to that endeavor, because we could not put it on the ballot this year, I'll be working with staff to put together a reverse timeline and a curbside RFP for spring of 2023, so we'll have more accurate costs amounts, so that we can put it on the ballot for next June. Infrastructure and asset management, the second one, was to put together a storm water presentation. This is ongoing. I had been working with DPW staff in the planning department. We put together the bylaws which were passed in November, and I will work with the interim, as well as the new DPW Director, to produce a formal plan. One of the things that I did think of when we were looking at the Municipal Vulnerability Program, as you heard earlier this evening, was to use one of our action grants to do a storm water master plan, to help us identify how we would put that together. So, that is still part of an ongoing goal that we're working on. Provide analysis of the Southbridge Town Facility Study. I have reviewed the studies that you've asked. Going forward, based on our work with the Ad Hoc Capital Planning Committee, I want to create a standing capital committee that I talked about, having members of the public. I would then work with them, as well as the DPW Director in the interim, to produce a long-range plan that we can not only deal through the capital plan, through other funding sources, including the grants, working with Ms. Dean. We're currently working on the new fire station. We're waiting on the final drawings for the animal kennel, and that will be going out to bid. And we've been working on, as I said, several of the other facilities, which we've been addressing through the capital plan. So, this is an ongoing goal. The, the study and analysis for the building and grounds maintenance, I've reviewed, again, this particular study, and I've talked to the receiver about it. It will be challenging, while we're still in receivership, to implement this. However, I have talked to Ms. Rubena, and asked her to put together a salary study and look at the integration of job functions between the school, as well as the DPW side, what the responsibilities, and how we would have to address collective bargaining issues. We have already started working in a collaborative effort with the new school operations manager, Ms. Miko. She had worked with us, getting members of the school facilities to work on plowing. We were also looking at other shared opportunities. I spoke recently with Dr. Valar, that we may be able to share some space between the, and reduce some costs as well. So, that will be ongoing. With regard to the school facility study, again, I have reviewed this, and I've discussed it with the receiver, and I've been in agreement with the receiver that the town should, should pursue an MSBA, which is the Mass School Building Authority Funds, and I've supported his capital request for the facility's master plan. And I believe that we should be working with the receiver and to apply to get 80 cents on the dollar, rather than trying to do some of these repairs out of the capital plan. So, I will continue to work with the receiver going forward to help him with that master plan, so that we can apply to get the best bang for the dollar. plan, so that we can apply to get the best bang for the dollars on that. In addition to working on those goals that were signed in November, I just wanted to quickly go over some of the other activities that we do, or I am responsible for. This is entitled Management and Oversight. What many people may not know is, on a regular basis, I am participating in a variety of management oversight meetings. Weekly, I participate in the FAA runway project meetings, where I meet with Stan Tech, as well as Mass DOT and others, to go over the project. During the time Delta, we had regular COVID meetings on a weekly basis. Roughly bi-monthly, we meet with the Fire Station Building Committee. I meet bi-monthly with the school receiver to go over issues, including the goals that we have. I participate in a monthly meeting with managers and administrators. We try and meet monthly with our staff, and quarterly, we meet with the Veterans District, with the managers in the other towns. Also, taking care of management and oversight, in the last few months, we've had to deal with paving issues on Clunin's Hill and Nane Street, which has required me to meet with various people, including doing site views. I've also been responsible for trying to take munis to task when we've had issues, as well as National Grid, and then I do conduct the IOD meetings, as you may know now, since we changed the bylaw. In the absence of the Human Resource Manager and during the reorg, I was responsible for filling several of the positions. That required us to review dozens of resumes, interview anywhere from four to six candidates for first and second interviews, to fill the HR Director Assistant position, as well as my Executive Assistant, my Confidential Clerk, the HR Specialist and the Assessor, and I'll be doing the same right now with the DPW Director, Treasurer and IT Director. And those are all positions that we had to update the job description, so I worked on all those with Ms. Rubena. On the right side, you'll see that I was responsible for the HR reorg. We did a small reorg with the cable staff, and as well as my role in HR, I've been tasked with overseeing investigations that have had to happen in the last few months, as well as personnel hearings, if there's been any disciplinary issues. I do attend the Maya meetings and attend policy review relative to our insurance and how we handle some of our employee services, and I'm working now with the Fire Chief on the Assessment Center Review for upcoming Lieutenant's Position. As many of you may or may not know, I'm constantly working with our legislators, both state and federal. Last week, I corresponded with Senator Warren and Senator Markey's office, as well as I was on the phone with Congressman Neal's office, and what we're routinely doing is talking to these individuals, including Senator Fatman and Representative Durant, about budget requests, ARPA 2.0 funding, funding for the fire station, as well as any funding from the infrastructure bill, and I'm happy to say that last week, through our efforts, Senator Fatman did respond that he did put an amendment into the upcoming Senate version of the budget to get the town $66,000 back for one of our emergency repairs for asbestos abatement. So these are, you know, valuable things that we do here on a day-to-day basis. I'm still tasked as the Chief Procurement Officer. In the last few months, I've been responsible for all the procurement relatives at the fire station, including getting the owner's project manager. I've helped out with the cable department, getting a lot of new equipment. I've run the RFPs for the airport diner, as well as the electrical work, and the appraiser and the environmental work that we've been doing around town. We've had several emergency procurements, which I'm still responsible for. We had a break in the reservoir water line, the library HVAC system went down, the asbestos removal over the school offices at Coal Ave, as I mentioned, as well as we had a water main break at Dudley River Road, which required emergency procurement. In the absence of Mr. Canoyer in the last few months, I've been, my office has been a de facto IT. We've been coordinating with our managed service provider, that's GDS. I've been responsible for interfacing with them on any of our needs. We did perform a security assessment last year, trying to determine what we need to do, upgrade not only with our IT, but our security cameras and doors. I've been responsible for getting people trained for cybersecurity. As many of you know, we did have a cyber incident in the last few months that I was responsible for managing, and as previously alluded to, we put the website in place, but I am also responsible with my office and my assistant in the HR of management of content, training the employees, and I do sometimes day-to-day modification update of content. We've had numerous legal matters that have been going on since the last review. I've been working on land acquisition, most frequently for the fire station, as well as the watershed, constantly in contact with the opioid litigation attorneys. I did send out an email this evening, just letting you know that the Attorney General has announced some information relative to the settlements, so we should be hearing more from our attorneys in the coming weeks. We had several cases relative to Mr. Solinsky, that I had to work with our Town Council on, and apprising the board and providing information. We had a couple of cases that we dealt with the planning board. I was responsible for terminating the diner lease, and then we get various letters from time to time, from different organizations, trying to, threatening legal action against the town, that I'm responsible for vetting and then passing on to council if need be necessary. Participation, these are just other things that I think are important, that you know that I participate in, much like the municipal vulnerability, not only the workshops, but behind the scenes. I've been involved with the ad hoc committees with capital planning and the ARPA funding, which you meet on a fairly regular basis. With Counsel Ryan, I participate in the monthly calls with the Worcester Regional Transportation Authority, and I do continue to participate in Joint Labor Management Committee meetings to keep abreast of what's going on in collective bargaining around the Commonwealth. Throughout the last six months, especially due to COVID, I was required to attend ongoing briefings from not only FEMA, but Administrative Finance relative to the CARES Act and funding for COVID-related expenditures. The US Treasury has had several briefings I've attended for ARPA. We attend the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission relative to storm water. I attend National Grid briefings relative to storm preparedness, as well as regional storm water meetings. The White House, as of late, has had numerous briefings that were invited to attend, and they're beneficial, so I sign up for those. And as, as you know from last week, the Massachusetts Municipal Association routinely has legislative COVID-19 and ARPA updates, which are very valuable to the town, and I had participated, as well as all the Baker-Polito Administration updates during the COVID, not only the COVID crisis initially, but the Delta resurgence. I'm required to go to training for not only my certifications, but as part of good governance and to bring back new ideas. I participate annually in the January MMA meeting, the Municipal Managers Association meeting was last week, as I mentioned, talking about working with employees post-COVID. I participate in the Human Resources Association meetings, as well as the Maya trainings. They routinely offer training seminars. I traveled with Ms. Rubena and the Fire Chief to an Injured Art Duty Seminar, and they have health and wellness seminars that we participate in, and oftentimes, we can get credit for those. And to maintain my MCPPO, I attend trainings and briefings with the Inspector General's Office. We've had major contracts that I've helped either negotiate myself or participate with Town Council, including the fire station owner-project manager contracts. I've been working on and off with Sturbridge on renewing our sewer IMA. It's been a little bit challenging, because they've changed the administrators. I started with Mr. Bridges, and then he left. They had an interim, Mr. Reed, who's just left, and they now have a new TA over there, so I assume we will pick that up shortly. I was on the phone today, we're starting negotiations on our electricity contracts. We're going to be sending out an RFP for that. I was with you a few months ago when we finalized our natural gas contract, and I'm happy to tell you that when we locked in, we've already saved almost thirty percent on the gas, natural gas rates. If you're buying contracts now, they're thirty percent higher than when we locked in a couple months ago. I did put charter negotiations there, charter communications. Unfortunately, we started out doing well, but we have not had any real feedback in months from charter, and when I was at the MMA meeting the other day, I was talking with other communities, and they aren't having much better luck. Financial matters, as you know, I've worked on the FY23 budget, as well as the capital plan, and created the new capital plan format. That takes up the bulk of our time between January and late April and into early May. What has really taken up the bulk of my time, probably since January 1st, is ongoing collective bargaining. I have four open contracts, the IAFF, which is our fire, Mass Cop, our dispatch, SEIU, DPW and Mass Cop, the police department. I'm meeting with three of the unions this week, and then I'm meeting again next week. We meet almost on an every-other-week basis. Each negotiation session can last several hours, and there's several hours of preparation that I meet. Today, I met with HR and the Fire Command Staff for a couple hours to go over the proposals before we meet this week, so in any given week, collective bargaining can take up about twenty-five percent of the time. Again, this does not include the other meetings that we attend regularly. And lastly, I just want to close out, I do work a lot with Ms. Dean in economic development on behalf of the town. This is, again, an ongoing thing, but I try and make myself available to go out. We did a tour the other day at SHOT. We talked with Quincyman Community College. We had a meeting today, and I've met in the past with Worcester Development, Worcester Business Development Corporation. I try to attend meetings like the Southbridge Business Partnership. I've spoken at the Lions on behalf of the town of Southbridge. I've been meeting regularly and having discussions with our marijuana retailers to ensure that they're moving along, so that we can generate money for our pavement management. I do meet regularly in my office with prospective business leaders. We've been working on liquor licenses with Senator Fatman's office, and we spent a lot of time in these last few months on the rail trail. As you know, I worked closely with Ms. Dean on the EDA grant application, and one of the most important things I think I did was work with Mass DOT to secure the $1.1 million in matching funding, should we get the grant. So I just wanted to give you a quick overview as to what I've been up to for the last eight to nine months, and where I was, starting the goals that Counsel Jovan had presented last November. There's been a lot going on, and as I indicated, that not everything that's on those slides accurately represents what we do on a day-to-day basis with the staff here in Town Hall and the meetings and the other things we do, but we do get a lot done here, and I appreciate my staff and all the department heads that allow us to get all this done, and I think we do a good job, and I think I do try to meet all of your expectations and exceed them whenever possible, and do what's in the best interest of the community, for the community of Southbridge, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. It's certainly a comprehensive and extensive listing of what you're doing on a day-to-day basis, and I'm sure it's not totally inclusive. I'm sure there are other things as well that probably escaped you as you were putting this together. I'm wondering if it would be possible for you to send this presentation to the various members of the council?
Sure.
And perhaps put it on the website?
Okay.
Great, okay. Very good. Thank you so much. All right, item number thirty-six, Counsel's Form. Let's start to my immediate left today. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, just also wanted to remind everybody to go out and vote on next Tuesday. Make your voices heard. We have five candidates running for three seats on council. I urge everyone to watch the forum. It was quite helpful for me to help make up my mind, and I'm sure it'll be helpful for you. Make your voices heard. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Alzo.
Couple of things. I too would like to tell everybody to go out and vote. It's your tax dollars, it's your government, you vote your conscience, and send the people up to the chamber that you feel can do that job. I'd just like to say, send out a thank you to Counsel Adams, and I want to apologize, I did not attend the Memorial Day services, but I had to work, and I heard that you did a fantastic job, as usual, carrying the ball for Southbridge and its veterans. Job well done, everybody was raving about it. Finally, I'd just like to say, I was approached by the residents on Ellis Road and the pastor of the church on Ellis Road, and they would like to extend their thank you to Counsel Marketti, as Chairman of DPW and your committee. The markings have finally been marked out for the elevations for Ellis Road to be resurfaced. It's only been fifty years, but the thanks and the shout-out, nice job DPW and the group, the subcommittee that got that pushed across the finish line. I know we have another meeting, but I'm going to save my speech for Mr. Jovan at his last meeting, and so we got one more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Counsel Al.
I'm outside this time, thank you.
Very good. Counsel Jovan.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, unfortunately, I was not able to attend the Memorial Day Parade, because I got called into the Paxton Police Department to cover their activities as a police officer for traffic control, so this is the first one I've missed, so thank you all that put that on, and I'm sure it was a great event and all the work that went into that. To the Southbridge High graduates, congratulations to them as well. Unfortunately, I was unable to make it, again, because of work commitments. I unfortunately had to go into Boston late in the afternoon on Friday, and traffic didn't get me home till after seven, so I missed graduation. So congratulations to all those graduates. Wish I could have been there. It did look like it was a great day, through the social media and all that. And finally, to those that are running for Town Council, thank you for putting your name forward. This job takes a tremendous amount of commitment, if you want to do it right. So to the voters out there, and I know it's late, to the voters out there, make sure you look at those that are running and the work that they're going to put into the council. As you can see, there's one seat that has been vacant for the last three months. No communication with other councilors outside of saying that he possibly had a job, and I don't begrudge that. You have a commitment. However, if you cannot fulfill your commitment, you should have made a decision for the voters of Southbridge, if you can't fulfill that commitment. Instead of going on social media criticizing councilors that are here every day, that are working hard for the voters. If you want to have a vote, don't criticize the councilors and the Town Manager that is here today, working hard on behalf of our constituents. The fine words of Edward McCann, right, Scott? My constituents. We are here for our constituents. We are here in the dais, working hard every day. If you want to know what's going on with the receiver and the school system and the presentation at council, should have been here to make sure that you were here, or reached out to the councilors that participated in that, and not throw your shots through social media. That's not the way you do good business. We, as a council, have worked very hard to try to fix what goes on. We're not perfect, I'm not perfect, but don't stand behind a keyboard to criticize those that are here. So those that are running for council, good luck. It takes a lot of work, it takes a commitment, so to the voters, research those that are running to see who's going to put that commitment in. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick points. First off, I do want to point out that I was also at graduation, thank you. It's always nice to see the kids go into the world, and it seems like our classes, our graduating classes are slowly growing in size, which is always a nice thing to see. But the two points that I wanted to bring up was, as far as getting involved in things, at 11:00 AM on Wednesday, the library's going to be hosting the Imagine 2050 Visioning Session, which the public can attend to get involved in, trying to get some idea of what you want to see our town and our region look like in 2050, looking at environment, come on, Brian, environment, economy, equity issues, a whole slew of different things. And you can go on the CMRPC website to fill out their survey about suggesting the various areas that would be your priorities. And the other thing I wanted to point out is, on Thursday, the 16th, I happen to be a member of the Dudley Grange, and we're doing our Strawberry Festival, which is a public event in Dudley, beside Nichols. So if you're interested in that, come on down, and of course, the 14th is our election, as everybody's already stated, so make sure you please come out and vote.
Very good. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I did attend the Memorial Day Parade, and it was an excellent showing. The weather cooperated, and I really appreciate Counsel Adams for conducting that parade every year. every year. I just have a couple of things here in addition. In February, the town council voted to replace the town hall carpets, and I'd just like to know where that stands with the town manager. Also, in January, we voted on a proposal to reevaluate the traffic singles downtown, reinstalling the left-turn arrows on Main Street at the intersection of Elm and Central. The study was to be completed at no charge to the town. Since then, with the DPW director leaving, it seems the study has fallen off the radar. So I'd like to know where that study is at. I'd like to remind the residents that the Morris Street Yard Sale is this Saturday, June 11th. And don't forget to take a walk down Maria Avenue, as my wife and I will also be setting up this year. Any young family starting off should stop by as we are selling a lot of useful items for the home. And finally, I would also like to say that next Tuesday, June 14th, is the town election at the Community Center at 153 Chestnut Street. I encourage everyone eligible to please exercise your right to vote. No matter who you vote for, the most important thing you can do is to vote. That's next Tuesday, June 14th, at the Community Center, 153 Chestnut Street in Southbridge. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Vice Chair Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I just want to remind everybody, seventy-eight years ago, a lot of men died on the beaches of Normandy on D-Day, June 6, 1944. And remember to those men that perished, over 2,500 Americans, over 4,400 total of Allied forces perished that day on the beaches there. So I need to know our history, where we're at, and that caveats off the fact that we're able to sit here and have a vote on June 14th this year. So I wish all those that are running the best and, you know, look forward to seeing how the results pan out that evening of. I also wanted to put in here, a friend of mine and another Marine, they're both Marines, both retired sergeant majors, stepped off from the USS Constitution this morning at 08 after morning colors, on their route, on their road trip from Boston area all the way to the state, good state of Oregon, almost 3,400 miles along Route 20. All the way there, they're going to be walking 20 to 25 miles per day to bring awareness to those 80,000 souls that are still buried on foreign land, or cannot be found on foreign land. And what they call is a history flight. And their purpose is to raise national awareness of the plight of more than 80,000 missing service members and their Gold Star families. And they started, I wished them the best of luck yesterday before they stepped off this morning at 08. They made it all the way to Sudbury, and they'll be passing up through Oxford and along, well, along Route 20. So if you, anybody in the residence see them walking, just two guys walking, one's got a backpack, and the other one's got a, I used to run with my daughters, and I'm with the carriers, but he's hooked that up to his backside, and they're walking all the way over there to Oregon to raise awareness. So I wish them nothing but the best, semper fidelis to all them who support them. And that's all I have today. Thank you for the kind words for Memorial Day. A lot of work still has to be done to make it better and better every single year, which that is our plan. Thank you for all the well wishes, and it took a big team to make that happen, that date of. That's all I have for the night. Next meeting will be Monday, June 27th, 2022, 7:00 PM here in the dais.
Very good. Item number thirty-eight, adjournment.
So moved.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous as all present. We are adjourned.